Hi, good evening. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. And welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. Tonight, we're talking with candidates for Houston City Council District B. And we have a wide assortment, a roomful of people, and we're going to get to them in just a second. Thank you for joining us, and we're going to be asking each of these candidates a question. We're going to give them a chance to respond so that you, the voter, can learn a little bit more about them, learn who you're voting for, learn who the candidates are, so that you can make a better informed decision. So we'll get right to the questions. Welcome all of you, and thank you for joining us. We'll start over here with Broderick Butler. Thank you for being here. I'm going to ask you the first question that everybody will have a chance to answer, but we'll start with you. Mr. Butler, why are you running for office?
Good evening. Thank you, Gene. My name is Broderick Butler, and I'm running for District B City Council member. And the reason that I'm running for office is very simple and straightforward: to better my community. And what I mean by that is, after Harvey dealing with city officials and looking at how they went about repairing and recovering the city, I discovered and understood, like most Houstonians, there was a disconnect. And there was a disconnect between the people and their government. And that government did not serve the people anymore. I have been one of the few candidates that have gone in front of the City Council, County Commissioners Court, as well as Metro's Board, to talk to them about, as the city recovers, what the city was doing before Harvey, what the city is doing after Harvey. Some of those answers I haven't liked. I've gone into almost every area of the district and inquired to people, not to vote for me, I simply asked them what was their top three concerns. People told me those concerns. And instead of giving them some literature, I then asked them to physically take me if we could during the day. And they did. So as we saw all of these areas in the city of Houston, I then went down to City Hall, to the City Council, spoke directly to power, and asked and inquired, could they resolve these issues? Some of those issues had gone in my district, District B, where we're here, since 2013, repeatedly. Repeatedly, people have called and asked over and over again. So the reason that I'm running is, people in District B residents feel like they have lost their voice, and when it comes to City Hall, County Commissioners Court, Metro, and other levels of government, they feel powerless. So I had to make a decision. That decision was that I would make a choice to get off the sidelines, get involved, and run for City Council District B.
Thank you. Charisma Gillum, welcome to Houston Media Source and Conversations with the Candidates.
Hi, my name is Charisma Gillum. I'm running for City Council District B. I chose to run because, as a college student, I see certain atrocities that happen every day, such as police brutality, firefighters not getting enough pay, mothers fearing for their children's life and their children's education. I feel that there's a need for a change in Houston, and I want to be that change Houston needs. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Kossi-Tyrnichev, welcome. How would you answer the question?
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Kossi-Tyrnichev, and I want to be your voice, your choice, for Houston City Council District B. I chose to run for office because I've had the, first of all, I'm a resident of District B. I've also been educated in District B, served as an educator in the North Forest Independent School District. I now am a professor at Texas Southern University, and I have served as a church musician in the 5th Ward area for 42 years, as an educator for 33. And I'm now ready to take those skills to City Hall. Why? I live in District B. I live actually in the Cashmere Gardens area. And I see that there are so many areas in our district, and also in the place where I live, that are clearly neglected. We have a serious problem throughout the district with illegal dumping. I'm also concerned about the residents who live in my district, who are continuing to have problems related to their suffering from Hurricane Harvey. We also have problems with drainage. A number of the streets throughout the district need, they're in complete disrepair. I want to make sure that we have a voice on City Council, someone who is really committed, someone who is capable, someone who is qualified, to address the needs of the people of the community. Because I live in the community, I know what's going on on the ground. As I've gone from one community to the next, I see the problems that are there. One of the things that is so important about my living there is that my neighbors can get to me. In fact, once I put signs up in my yard letting them know that I was running, I've had people approach me even now to tell me what I need to do on City Council. So I want to take the commitment that I know I have, the commitment that I've proven in the church house, the commitment that I have proven in the schoolhouse, I now want to take to City Hall. Vote Karen Kossi-Tyrnichev. I want to be your choice, your voice for Houston City Council District B.
Thank you. Alvin Byrd.
Thank you, Gene. Good evening. My name is Alvin Byrd, and I'm running for Houston City Council District B. I'm running because I think, at this point, that my experience and my civic engagement qualifications will help me continue to move the district forward from day one. I'm a product of District B, born and raised in the 5th Ward area, a product of District B public schools, and most of my civic engagement has been in the district. What I'm planning to bring to the district is continuity and building consensus. We noticed that most of the district is so fragmented that 5th Ward doesn't know Acres Homes, Acres Homes doesn't know Pleasantville. So we want to build that consensus, and then also make sure that we continue to deal with some of the ongoing problems, as folks have said here, about the illegal dumping, and also to make sure that we have healthy food options in my district. That's Alvin Byrd, Houston City Council District B.
Thank you. Tarsha Jackson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here. I'm Tarsha Jackson, and I'm running for Houston City Council District B. I was born and raised in the district, from Acres Homes. I currently live in Greenspoint in northeast Houston. I'm one of 16 children, come from a very large family. And so I know the love and the pride that we have for our community, and how hard we fight to keep the community moving forward. Right now, our district is suffering from our schools closing, you know, we got business closing, our streets are crumbling, and so I just want to fight for the changes District B deserves. I want to spend all my energy fighting for those changes. You see, 18 years ago, my life changed after my 10-year-old special needs son was arrested in his elementary school. I went from being a working mom to a parent advocate, organizing other families to fight for our children. And as a result, I was instrumental in getting legislation passed that prohibit counties from jelling kids on classy misdemeanors. We established a parent bill of rights, and we got over 2,000 kids returned back home into their communities within one day. And what that fight taught me is that when we come together under unified voice, anything is possible. And so I want to take all that energy, all what I've learned over the years, and apply it back into my community. As the county director at Texas Organizing Project, I fought and won millions to repair homes damaged due to Hurricane Ike. You know, the whole bail reform fight, I was instrumental in spearheading that, and today we have bail reform. And so I've been fighting and ridding results, and that's what I plan to do on City Council. I want to fight for good jobs. I want to fight to make sure our neighborhoods are not flooding every time it rains. And I want to fight to make sure that we're not locking people up on traffic tickets and fees and fines. I know it's a lot, but I know it can be done with a true partner, somebody that's ready to partner with the community to make it happen. We can do anything. And so I'm that partner, Tarsha Jackson, for Houston City Council District B.
Thank you very much. Huey German Wilson.
Good evening, Gene. My name is Huey German Wilson, and I am the candidate for City Council District B. I have worked and lived in Trinity Gardens, the Trinity Gardens area of Houston my entire life. I volunteered. I am a grassroots activist in Trinity Gardens. We reached out across northeast Houston after Harvey to make sure that the citizens that were affected by the storm were addressed, their needs were addressed, and that we continue even today to make sure that those residents are seeing some real results. And we are partnering with nonprofits and for-profits to have the infrastructure corrected in our neighborhoods. These are not things that I think I can do, these are the things that we do every day. We are working to address the food insecurities. We spoke before the State Committee on Finance earlier in the spring to discuss the food insecurities and what those changes might be in our community to see some real results. We've recently opened a farmer's market, so that we are currently alleviating those food insecurities in our community. We've worked consistently with our public schools so that those schools are successful schools. Our school, one of the school community schools, Cashmere High School, is no longer on IR with the state of Texas, TEA. We have seen very real results from the work that we do across northeast Houston. I am Huey German Wilson, your candidate for City Council District B.
Thank you very much. Robin Anderson.
Thanks for having me, Gene. My name is Robin J. Anderson. I'm running for Houston City Council District B. I grew up in the Acres Home area. I'm a single-parent household. My mom, she taught for 35 years in the Aldine Independent School District. I pretty much went through, I went through school, all through Aldine, throughout my whole life or whatnot. I went through the process of grassroots, of getting involved in my super neighborhood. I've got involved in my civic clubs. I sat, I was the vice president for four years of Super Neighborhood. I brought, actually, a program that brought the whole community together called the Acres Home Tree Lighting Ceremony. I wanted to bring more unity to our community. This seat can be used to be, you have to have more advocacy in this seat. And so that's what I plan to do, is bring more advocacy and bring our community together to help fight the issues as far as the legal dumping, the economic development issues, and things of that nature. So my name is Robin J. Anderson, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, Allison Quintana.
Thank you, Gene. My name is Allison Quintana, and I'm running for City Council District B. I'm running because I see a position where I can affect change. I have a strong educational background in finance and economics. I graduated from the University of Houston. I currently work in oil and gas, and right now, all day, every day, all I do is financial and operational audit. I'm a numbers person. And what our district really needs is to look at our numbers. You know, a lot of our TERS revenue, a lot of the organizations that we've been letting money go out to, we don't see the reinvestment into the community. I currently live in 5th Ward, but I used to live in Trinity Gardens. I have family in Cynic Wood. I've been all around the district. For the past two and a half years, I've been active in an organization called Progressive 5th Ward. And not only do I live in the district, but I'm raising my daughter in the district. So I'm very passionate about the issues because we live and breathe them every single day. I feel that we need a position where, I'm in a position where I can bring fresh ideas to the table. And in a city where we're having such exponential growth, both in population and in economics, we really need somebody who's going to be able to have the energy and tackle the numbers as they're coming in. And I'm your next city council member, Allison Quintana, for City Council District B.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go back to you and ask another question. You've all talked about various issues. We have a UH Downtown honor student who is going to ask you a question. And Allison Quintana, we'll start off with you again, but here is our honor student question for you.
Hello, my name is Tanya Youngs. I am an honor student at the University of Houston Downtown. What is the biggest issue you see in District B, and what would you do about it? Thank you, and good luck on the campaign.
Okay, I feel like the biggest issue in District B is, the entire district, we live in a trash dump. The entire district has problems with illegal dumping. And while others might not feel it's as high as an issue, I think it's an extreme issue. But at the end of the day, we need to start looking at things just a little bit deeper. It's not just a city problem. I think it's a problem within the communities. I think it's a problem with our police enforcement. I think we need to start looking at our partnerships a little bit closer between our civic organizations, the people in the community, and our city officials. We can't keep condoning the problem, because there's been a lot of condoning over the years. We need to start looking at the policy changes. Some of the policies are extremely old and outdated, and we need to start looking at different implementations that we can do to kind of reinforce some kind of ramifications that will deter people from dumping. The community members need to learn to come together so we can form more sense of pride and personal respect for our property. And then I would like to also work with our local law enforcement to see if maybe they could allocate a small portion of their budget to maybe do a sting, or look at things on a different level.
Okay, thank you very much. Robin Anderson, how would you answer that question?
That's a good question. What I've noticed is that we have a lack of homeowners. We need more homeowners to build more stability in our community. We have too many transient liberals. And so what I would do is, what I've been doing, is we have seminars to help people to show them how to get out of an apartment and get into homes. So we get more stability, our civic clubs start to get stronger again. Our civic clubs get strong, then we can start having more aisles on the ground as far as having, tackling issues as far as illegal dumping. And we have more stability in our community as far as with homeownership, that comes with economic development. With economic development comes better infrastructure. So with those things, I want to tackle, is basically showing people how to become homeowners and get more stability in our community. That's really what we need. Thank you.
Huey German Wilson.
While illegal dumping is a huge issue in our community, it's also the operation of silos that our various communities operate within. So illegal dumping could be a huge issue, and is a very real issue across District B. The safety aspect of that illegal dumping is more of a problem when we have communities where they don't feel that they have a voice. And so that issue is an issue that I've tackled over and over again by confronting ARA 311 on their system, so that the constituents that live in District B have the opportunity to not only call in, but as a council member, when we check those numbers, we know that they're good numbers, they're effective numbers, and that we've gotten the most we could get. Our information is going to 311, it's going through the system the way it needs to go through the system, and therefore, they're addressing our issues in a timely fashion. So not only is illegal dumping a huge issue in our community, but how our community is reacting. We are woefully neglected and have been for a number of years. And we have spent a great deal of time making sure that our community comes together in town hall meetings and to address that very issue, the illegal dumping aspect of it. And so illegal dumping, the drainage issue across District B, our community saw a great disaster for Harvey. And they are not realizing the results that they could, because they don't, we don't always know how to reach out and get the best results. And as the council member for District B, I've already done that work. I'm already incorporating all of the feedback that we hear when we're on the ground, talking to constituents about what they want to see that's different. So...
Okay, thank you. Tarsha Jackson.
Yes, I agree with my colleagues that illegal dumping and renters is a major problem. But I feel that we need to address poverty. In District B, you have 40% of the people making under $25,000 a year, you know? And even at the airport, being in District B, one of multi-billion dollar company, we have 17% of the people working there on government assistance. So if we address poverty, making sure that people are getting paid a fair wage, a livable wage, at least $15 an hour, and we can do that today by making sure that anybody that's doing business with the city, that have a city contract, is paying at least $15 an hour. Any tax credit deals is paying at least $15 an hour. And making sure that they hire people from within our neighborhoods. And so if people cannot afford to go and don't have a car to travel to the one dumping site that we have in District B, that poses a problem. So when we address poverty, then we address the lack of homeownership, and then we address the illegal dumping and the other issues that impact our communities.
Thank you. Alvin Byrd.
Yes, we have many problems that can be put very high on the priority list. One of the issues that we have in the District B is, one of the fastest-growing issues in the district is environmental injustice. Right now, we are inundated with concrete batch plants popping up everywhere. We need to get stronger regulations on how these concrete batch plants are permitted. Then we have this inundation of truck stops that are coming in our neighborhoods because of the lack of deed restrictions and there's no zoning in the city of Houston. District B seems to be the place where folks come and set up shop. One of the things I think that will help, not alleviate, but reduce some of this, is if we had more community engagement, more civic engagement. As Rob Anderson spoke, that, you know, once we get and strengthen our civic clubs again, then we'll be able to address some of these issues that we think are very high priority issues.
Thank you. Karen Kossi-Tyrnichev.
Yes, I agree with the problem of illegal dumping. As I've already mentioned, poverty is an issue, of course. I think that at the root of these problems really is access to quality education. The funds for education are very important. I know that I was able to achieve what I have because I was able to go to college. Not that all students will necessarily go to college, but they need access to vocational training. That is very important. As I teach at Texas Southern University, the main reason that students don't finish is for financial reasons. Their lives are already encumbered with whatever they're trying to take care of, but having the resources to go to college is also very important. Many of them are working and trying to go to school at the same time. So if they're able to have a job that pays them, not, and I won't just say a living wage, but many of our residents need a wage that I like to call a "givable" wage. One that they can, one that allows them not only to pay the bills, but one that allows them to save and to prepare for these financial responsibilities that they will have, for example, to send their kids to school. I'm glad that in District B, we do have some early college programs for kids where they are able to earn at least two years of college while they're still in high school, and their parents are able to save money on those first two years of college. That's important. So having programs that allow them to get as far as they possibly can and acquire as much education as they can, that's also important. There is a direct correlation. When you look at the census data for each of the ZIP codes in District B, you will see that there is a direct correlation between the amount of money that people make and the educational attainment, the level of education that they've been able to attain. And so we want to make sure that those kids who are at Cashmere High School, who are at the various high schools in our district, that they have the opportunity to move forward and therefore, plan for a much richer life than they would have had without education.
Thank you. Charisma Gillum.
Okay, so I agree with all the candidates here today about the legal dumping and the poverty problem, but I see the biggest problem in Houston is irrigation and the infrastructure. We have roads that are crumbling in our neighborhoods, from trucks driving down them 24/7 and parking on them. We have instances such as Harvey where people couldn't get out their homes because they were flooded. I live in a part of District B Valley Forest near Mesa and Tibwell, off of John Ralston, where there was over 300 people stranded from the flood. We almost died because of the flooding issue. It all could have been avoided if we had more connections with the community, if Mayor Sylvester Turner was more talkative towards us, if we had better irrigation, if we put more money into our drainage and all those systems. With Southeastern Christian Association, we had to work to get these houses back up. Southeastern Christian Association is the association I helped run with my father, where we get, we help people who's in need and hide domestic violence victims and all of that. So during Harvey, we had to work to get these people out of their houses. We had to call in helicopters and all this. We had 300 people stuck out there, couldn't get to Georgia Brown in a timely manner, and a couple of them actually died. We need to work to fix this irrigation problem before another instance like Hurricane Harvey happens again, and I will work to fix these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Broderick Butler.
District B is historically underrepresented and underserved. So my answer to the question is economic development. Economic development ties into all of the aspects of the district in regards to governmental dollars that come in and private sector dollars. They will stimulate jobs, they will stimulate growth, they will stimulate repair, beautification, but also it will stimulate, the thing that we truly need is business ownership. Individuals will have the opportunity to open their own businesses. Individuals will have the opportunity as residents to find businesses that they can grow in the district. And businesses will come from outside the district to provide goods and services that we don't have at this point in time. And overall, eventually, the quality of life in the district will rise. It will become a place that we are proud to live in as we are now, but even more so, and it can get better. But also to have individuals who are attracted to the district to invest in the district. And at this point in time, we are not having that investment from corporations and businesses. They get to dictate the terms when they come in. We don't get to vet them. They can become, for lack of a better word, a little bit more greedy than they should be, but if we vet them and we are able to negotiate with them better terms, such as employ half of your workforce from a five-mile radius of whatever project you're going to do. If you come in as a developer or an investor, you have to build your project, but you have to be vetted, but you also have to build a project that contributes to the community. So if you build an office park, build a park. So economic development attaches a lot of things and sort of lifts a rising tide, lifts all boats, and will seep into people's lives, such as a young person does not have to leave the community now to find a job on the other side of town. He doesn't have to take mobility that allows him to travel. He can actually live and work in the same community that he is in. And that is what we're trying to accomplish, to make District B a great place to live, to work, and to play. But the way we do that is to stimulate our local economy, which hasn't been done for about 30 years.
Okay, so now I'm going to ask a tough question, but I'm only going to give you two minutes to answer it. Excellent point. Your district needs more economic development, but other candidates have pointed out that part of the problem is growth that is not regulated. So you have dumping, you have people not getting the right wages, you have flooding issues, and you have, as you called it, environmental injustice. So now I'm going to go back to you and let you answer this question. How do you regulate more economic growth, but then businesses who aren't respecting the district? How do you have both?
You have both by allowing business owners that exist in the district to become the owners. They invest in the district. They start and open and operate and maybe even close businesses. They provide services to their neighbors. They are the ones who will set the tone, they are the ones who set the bar. Then when you have individuals on the outside who want to come in and invest, bring businesses, they will see that this is fertile ground. One individual told me, as he saw a peloton of bike riders go through, that his neighborhood was deemed a safe neighborhood to allow bike riders to go through. But we see that in the Heights, we see that in Memorial, and that's a designation? Well, it's an indicator. And sometimes you have to have indicators. But the thing is, is that you have a job that you get up and go to every day, you take pride in it, you feed your family, you put food on the table, you educate your children, and you pay for their education. So the way you balance that is, you create economic development and growth, but you must have a balance to hedge against things like gentrification and pricing yourself out of your own market.
Okay, thank you. Charisma Gillum.
Can you repeat the question?
So how do you get both economic development and also maintain a good livelihood, lifestyle for the community, healthy community?
I feel like we should bring more education opportunities into the communities. There's only certain amounts of schools here that are still open that are Black-owned. They closed down one school that I went to, Children's First Academy, and that was a really good school. And we have to educate people for them to be able to bring themselves out of poverty and/or get work outside our own businesses. Education is the key to everything, and if I am elected, I will work to bring education into this community. Next thing we should probably do is bring more hospitals into this community, because we have very little that are good, no clinics, no really good health clinics, free clinics at all. The only thing that we really... The only thing that we really have that's close to us is MD Anderson and LBJ. LBJ, we know the problems with LBJ, the wait time is, could probably kill you. So if we bring hospitals and stuff like that into our communities, we bring jobs into the communities for people with nursing degrees, receptionists, and everything else that will take to run a hospital, that'll fund over 10,000 people will be able to work. If we keep bringing hospitals and other things like that, schools, and if we bring infrastructure, jobs into our community, I would want for the people, the contractors we hire, to be from our community. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Cossey-Tirnischew.
First, it's important to recognize that different sections in District B have different economic situations, right? Not all of them are in the same, have the same exact experiences with economic development. Some, those areas that are close, for example, to the Greenspoint area, the Intercontinental Airport is there, right? But still, education is key. There's no way to get around it. When a business is going into an area, you know, they're coming in to decide whether or not they're going to go to a certain area, they're looking at a number of things. And if it's the kind of business that depends on the income of the residents there, they're going to make a decision, okay? It's one of the reasons, as I've told my students, you may see a business like Timmy Chan's in certain places, but you may not necessarily see a Starbucks. If a person is coming in to make money, depending on the business that they have, they want to make sure that the residents can actually purchase what it is they have to sell. So it's a complex issue, and it's not something that you can resolve in even one term, but there has to be a systemic belief that the people resources in the district need to be developed to the highest level. If we invest in the people in District B, we're going to see tremendous growth within the district. Start with the people, and I think everything else will follow.
Okay, thank you. Alvin Byrd.
Yes, in regards to the marriage with economic development and community development, it's critical in the district simply because of the fact that businesses follow rooftops. Once we improve and upgrade our infrastructure, we'll also address our drainage issue, then we'll be able to start to educate folks in the neighborhood to spend money in that neighborhood. One of the things we do is by us not having supportive services in the community is that we take our dollars outside of the community. Once we start this engagement between the residents of the district and the business owners of the district, then we'll start talking about, you know, the district being just like fingers on a hand. She talked about there are different areas that have different dynamics, but fingers on a hand are, you know, separate but equal, and then we can start talking about inclusion of the entire district.
Thank you. Tarsha Jackson.
Yes, I agree with my colleagues that we need to take care of the businesses within the district. I mean, we, you know, send out, give out millions of dollars to companies to come into our community, but like really focusing and coming up with innovative ways to help the businesses that they are, giving them the tax breaks or incentives to beautify the business, which will welcome people to come into their business, and then boom, they're going to start like making money, and now they got, they creating jobs, and then, of course, our community is booming. And once our community is booming with businesses already functioning that's there, it's going, other companies are going to want to come into the district. And so, like I said, I agree, focusing on what we have right there in the community right now, and then other businesses will come around.
Thank you. Huey German Wilson.
I think that, as my colleagues have stated, the economic development piece is crucial. It exists in our community historically across acres, homes and Trinity Gardens and Casimir Gardens. We have made do for ourselves. We farmed our own property. Those lots are relatively large because we have been able to be backyard farmers, backyard gardeners and farmers. And so in the last month, we have opened a farmer's market that is in the community, designed by the community to address the needs in the community. One of those needs being food desert and food insecurities, and so, and the other part of that being medical, so that if we are addressing our own needs, those things give us pride and make us go forward. And so it, as Karen said and Broderick said, it will help us to elevate our game when we can help ourselves, so that it's been crucial that we look internally for the things that can help us thrive. And so we've done that, and the economic development piece of that means that people in our community are now rallying to not only come to the farmer's market, but provide for that farmer's market.
Thank you. Robin Anderson.
Like I'm going to, you know, agree with all my colleagues, but I'd say the issue, the problem is simple. It's the powers and the people. Once we give the people the power on how to govern their, our community, that's the only way we're going to address the issue of economic development, of business coming in and not having our best interest. We have to show our community how to stay involved, get involved in your civic clubs, get involved in your super neighborhood. That's the only way we're going to fight these issues, you know, on ground zero. So like I said, I agree with all my colleagues, but to me, it's simple. Just get more stability as far as in the households.
Okay, thank you. Allison Kattana.
Yes, I agree with all of my colleagues. I also think we need to take a look at how we're spending our money and investing our money. I think we need to start annexing more vacant property into our already zone, our already drowned boundaries, and we could build areas where we can harvest and cultivate small businesses, independent owners. We have a lot of great minds in the district, and it would be nice if we had some type of incentive for small businesses or programs, if we can annex. We have a lot of actual abandoned land in the district that we can do a lot of things with. So I think annexing commercial property into our already zoned boundaries would be a good idea to try to get some revenue off of the building to reinvest back into the communities. Also, I think we need to be having conversations with the businesses in our community on how they can be a better neighbor. I would like to have some type of program where we could marry the couples of what the jobs need. I would like to go, basically go to the companies and say, what kind of skills do you need to be hired here for now and the future? And then I would like to know what our district has versus the skills, and then I would like to develop a workforce for them to basically meet the gap between the skills. But I would like commitment from the companies saying, okay, we're going to hire X amount of percentage of people from our district, and say, hey, you know, we would like to have nice places for, you know, the people who work for you in the community, so maybe they want to come move into our community and reinvest into our community.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to ask you one more big question, but you only have about a minute to answer. How are you going to, talking about all these issues within District B, and some of them are very serious, but you're going to be on city council with a bunch of other people who think their issues are the most important. How are you going to work with those other city council members? We'll start with you, Allison Kattana.
Yes, of course. I'm a people person at the end of the day, and I feel that every vote that I cast will always be in the mind of what the needs are for my, my community. I would also like to work with my colleague, fellow council members, and learn more about their districts and seeing maybe stuff that we can implement together, because at the end of the day, we all have to work together.
Okay. Robin Anderson.
Can you repeat the question again?
Okay, so everybody's got big issues. How are you going to work with other city council members who have big issues too?
Got you. Like my colleague just said here, my goal is to sit down with each, I'm going to sit down with each council member. We're going to sit and say, what are the issues you have going on in your community and your district? I'm going to, we're going to compare the two, you know, so that way I can know how when I do cast my vote, that it's going to better hit their district and vice versa. So it's all about building relationships, you know. We don't have to like each other, but we have to work together, and I think that's the main thing. So just mainly just sit down and talk and get in the consensus of what's going on and compare and contrast, and so that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Huey German Wilson, how are you going to get along with other members on council?
Well, as a sitting super neighborhood president, we found ways to work with the super neighborhoods across the boundaries that usually exist in our community, so that things that are common, we work together to get those common things accomplished. And then, so on city council, it would be a similar resolution, is working with my sitting council members so that things that are common adjacent to my community or across the communities, we can work those things out and see how we can get the most bang for our buck if we all work together.
Right.
Okay. Tarsha Jackson.
Yeah, the same thing. I mean, I spent years building coalitions around shared issues, and sometime we found the way our issues intersect, and so like building that coalition on council, identifying how our issues intersect, and most importantly, making sure that the community is involved, that it's not just the council rep, but it's the community that's putting pressure on all the council members to help, you know, advance whatever policies or solutions we need to advance on council.
Okay. Alvin Byrd.
Yes, my experience in working in city government as chief of staff in two different council members' offices has afforded me the opportunity to see how city government actually works. Building consensus with the other council members on the horseshoe is very important in regards to getting things done for my district. They have this old saying, one hand washes the other. You're looking for a win-win situation in regards to making your district better, which in fact will make the entire city better.
All right, thank you.
I agree that consensus is important. I think it would be great, we don't know what's going to happen in all of these races, you know, they're a contest throughout, right? And so some of us are going to be working with folks. We may be working with people who are already on city council, and some of us may all be, we may all be newcomers. So the point will be, first of all, for us to find out what problems are shared across the district, and then we can also come up with our list of particulars that are important to our individual districts, certain things that are top priorities in District B, for example. And so I've had many experiences working with people in the various organizations I've been a part of, and I'm really good at communicating and collaborating and negotiating, so I look forward to doing that on city council.
Thank you. Charisma Gillum.
By no means. I'm a politician. I'm not even the best speaker here, but I, growing up, I understood that communication is key, and we have to talk to each other. If I become city council members, we have to talk to each other, because if you take a drive around Houston anywhere, you will probably see the abandoned buildings, especially in Sharpstown. That's not even in our district, but that's a part of Houston that I would have to fight for if I do become city council. So there's many shared issues within our communities, and it's a matter of us communicating with one another and voting on these terms and these cases and these things, and what's in best for the voters of Houston, the people of Houston, because at the end of the day, that's what we're here for, is to benefit the people of Houston, not just ourselves, not just our egos, the people of Houston, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Thank you. Broderick Butler.
Working for the state legislature for 25 years, my answer would be simply this, to master the budget, to master the rules in regards to putting ordinances on the agenda. Secondly, would be to build relationships, and lastly, would be to truly understand the council and strong mayor philosophy, and come to an understanding with the mayor that on issues that the mayor needs your votes on that don't harm your district, you will be more than happy to work with them on it for things that will get on the agenda later for your district. But for things that the mayor wants that will harm your district, you have to have an understanding in place that those things will never be voted on favorably by you. So the budget, the rules, the relationships, and understanding who is the CEO and how one deals with the CEO to achieve a compromise and a goal.
All right. Thank you very much. Great answers, but we're quickly running out of time. I'm going to ask you one more question. Got a little over a minute, about a minute, give or take 30 seconds to answer this. But I got to tell you, those are great answers, and I'm glad I don't have to vote for you because it would be a tough decision to make. You all have really great answers. So would you tell me why, tell the audience, why they should vote for you, and also give them a way to contact you or your campaign for more information about you and your position, please? And we'll start back over here with Broderick Butler.
My skill set that applies to the job, I'm already doing the job. I'm in communities asking for problems and solving those problems and standing before the bodies that make the decision makers. And the way people can reach me is through social media, Broderick Butler. I'm on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I have a YouTube channel, and my website is going up very soon. So all you have to do is put in Broderick, B-R-O-D-E-R-I-C-K-F-BUTLER, and you'll find all of those social media platforms.
Okay, and I'm glad you spelled your name because we're running your name on the screen, but it's always good to spell out the name just in case viewers need some help with that. So again, why should people vote for you, and how are they going to get more information about your campaign, and how would they contact you?
Okay, as an 18-year-old college student, I understand why most voters would be apprehensive towards voting for me, and they're wondering what my qualifications are. Honestly, I've been a pillar in my community since I was 16, working with, as vice president of Southeastern Christian Association, running town hall meetings, speaking with people. For six months before I even started campaigning, I spoke with people in my community and asked them, what could I do for you if I get elected? And they told me, and that's a part of my platform. My platform is Charisma for Change in District B. You can reach me at my campaign website, which is charismaforchange.com, Charisma spelled K-A-R-I-S-M-A-F-O-R, change.com, and you can find me on Facebook and Twitter if you have those. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Karen.
Okay, my name is Karen Cossey-Tirnischew. You should vote for me because I am committed, I am qualified, and I am capable. I am committed to the residents of District B. I am committed to doing the absolute best job I can as your city council person, and I am qualified to do the job. You can contact me at votkkc.com. You can also contact me through social media, Karen Cossey-Tirnischew, Houston City Council, District B. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alvin Byrd, why should people vote for you, and how can they get in touch with your campaign for more information?
Once again, my name is Alvin Byrd, and you should vote for me, District B, because I have the experience and the know-how and the relationships that can help us move our district, continue to move our district forward from day one. My qualifications in regards to being a 10-year United States Navy veteran has garnered lots of support in regards to my leadership qualifications, my civic engagement. I was president of the Greater Fifth Ward Super Neighborhood Council, and my experience with working with city hall. So once again, you can reach me simply by going to alvindbyrd.com. Thank you.
And could you spell your name just for everybody?
That's Byrd, B-Y-R-D.
All right, thank you, sir. Tarsha Jackson.
Well, you should vote for me because I was born and raised in the district. I have passion, I have experience, I have a proven track record of fighting and winning on the issues that the community care about. After Hurricane Ike, as I said before, I was fought and won millions of dollars to repair homes that was damaged. The bail reform, I led the effort around that, and I will continue to fight and get results when I'm on council. So you should vote for me because I am the best person for this job. That's Tarsha Jackson, T-A-R-S-H-A-Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N. Thank you.
Thank you. And did you say how they could get in touch with your campaign?
Oh, you can contact me at tarshajackson, the number four, districtb.com.
Okay, thank you. Huey German Wilson.
Hi, you should vote for me because I am the candidate that's on the ground doing the work currently. I've been doing the work for the last 10 or 15 years at the grassroots level, making sure that my community is realizing new libraries, new infrastructure, how they can get things done. And if you elect me to council, I'll continue to do that work and work with the council members that we're already working with to get the job done. The truth really is in the work. You can reach me at Huey, H-U-E-Y, the number four, districtb.com, or my You can reach me at huey, H-U-E-Y, the number four, districtb.com, or my Facebook is Huey German Wilson for City Council, District B.
All right, well, thank you very much. Robin Anderson.
All right, I'm Robin J. Anderson, you can vote for me because I'm here to serve and not be served. I've been in the community doing work for the last 10 years, I have a proven record of being, putting the community first. So I'm here to, to build our community through unity, that's, that's my main goal, you know, so you can reach me at robinfordb@gmail.com, or my website is www.robinjanderson dot, I'm sorry, robinjanderson.com, or I'm also on Instagram, robin underscore j underscore anderson, and then on Facebook, robinjanderson. Thank you.
Thank you. And Allison Quintana.
Hi, you should vote for me because I feel like we should be represented by an everyday individual from the community. I'm very passionate about all the issues that we are experiencing, and not only that, I feel like I possess a different type of skill set in the financial and economic industry that I work every day of my life. You can reach me on Facebook, you can reach me on Instagram, it's Allison Quintana for District B, AllisonQuintana2019.com.
All right. So I want to thank you all for being on the show tonight, for coming down to Houston Media Source. It was a late show, eight to nine, and I know you've all been busy on the campaign trail, and you guys have great answers, and I think District B is very lucky to have such a good group of well-spoken, very qualified candidates with good ideas, and you are very aware of your district's needs, and so you're the type of people who really should be running for office. I, I was, you know, telling my students, you know, everybody pays attention to the presidential campaigns, and that's all the lights and the show, but really, it's people like you who are going to be on city council, who are on city council, who make decisions that affect us all every single day. You know, presidents can do all sorts of things, senators, and they may or may not affect us daily, but it's the local city council, and it's issues that you're having to deal with. And so I thank you all for your responses, and I thank you all for your time, and thank you all for showing up. Once again, I'll go through our candidates over here, we'll start with Allison Quintana one more time, Robin Anderson, Huey German Wilson, Tarsha Jackson, Alvin Byrd, Karen Kosse-Tirnichew, Charisma Gillum, and Broderick Butler. Thank you all so much. For you out there in the audience, I want to remind you that the League of Women Voters, every year, we're known because we put out voters guides, and that's where we ask candidates for various elections to state their positions on topics of importance to the city. And that will be coming out probably in October is the expected date, it'll be available on the internet, and it'll be available in paper format. Go to l w v houston.org for more information. We're celebrating too, this week, National Women's Equality Day, that was on August the 26th, and that's where we celebrate the 1920 adoption of the 20th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, giving women the right to vote. Citizenship comes with privileges, but many Americans didn't all get their privileges at once, and so women getting the right to vote in the 1920s tells you that democracy was long and hard fought for, and it's because of the women that were able to get that, and the men who helped vote to get that, and the people who lobbied, that we're all able to vote. Thank you again, thank you, have a good night, and next week, we'll start again with more conversations with the candidates. I'm Gene Prost for the League of Women Voters.